I'd like to call this meeting of the select board to order, please. All those that can, please stand for the pledge. And Mr. Boyle, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every day just as well.
Brittany, will you do the roll call, please?
Sir, Richard?
Here.
Uh, Issa?
Here.
And Hollis?
Here.
John Boyle?
Here.
And Will.
Here.
Okay, the minutes. I'll call for a motion to table the minutes.
I'll make a motion to table the minute, the reading of the minutes from July 23rd to July 11th.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion was made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The public to address the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or an issue of the town or matter of the town. If you are intent on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair if it does need. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make this request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone who wants to speak to any of the items on the agenda? Richard?
Um, well, two things. Uh, original 164 Greenridge Drive. Uh, if I could be recognized for streetlights, I think I probably would be anywhere on the agenda. Uh, the other thing is, I don't know the whole background to it, but I read an article in the paper about the number of trees getting cut down on a road. Uh, and that does concern me that it seems that it was done in haste. And as I said, I don't know the whole details. And maybe it's something that the select board with Ken and everyone else can see if there's a way that we can look at notification that we're going to cut down trees en masse because, you know, some of these trees are 50 to 100 years old. And once you cut them down, you can't get them back. So, that would be my comment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have one of those trees that's 50, 60 years old.
Could you just say your name for the record?
Carol Chapman, 44 Peace Avenue. And my tree is literally crashing down on everything. My neighbor's truck, my roof, it's rotted. I asked to have it taken down and I haven't had any luck. It's on the town property. It's been there, I've been there for over 50 years and the tree has too. But it's totally falling apart. It's completely rotted. I would like to have somebody address that.
What was it?
44 Peace Avenue. And it is on town property.
Did you have John check that out? Whoever checked that?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we're at item six. A certificate of appreciation. We have to honor Mark Rancourt tonight. Ken, would you like to elaborate on that a little?
Well, is there someone from the trustees? Uh, trustees asked us to recognize Mark, who chose not to run for your election. I don't blame him after serving for 13 years. But we want to honor him by saying thank you and that the select board presented him with a certificate of appreciation.
Mark, would you come forward, please? Can't have this still assigned. The select board of the town of Dalton, on behalf of the citizens of Dalton, hereby extends their sincere appreciation to Mark Rancourt for his 13 years of dedicated service to the town as a member of the library trustees, given on this day, the 20th day of August in the year 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, the agenda. Communication from Selectman Boyle, dedication of Old Windsor Road Bridge. John?
Sure. Uh, just to give you a little background to the folks in the audience, the town of Dalton has a longstanding tradition, unfortunately, of dedicating and memorializing a bridge in town to, uh, a member of our armed services that was unfortunately killed in action during the last several wars. And again, we have this unfortunate duty. Uh, Mitchell K., Specialist Mitchell K. Dowling, uh, Daltonian, was killed in action in Afghanistan approximately five years ago. Uh, the board asked me to, uh, put together a suitable memoriam honoring Specialist Dowling. And I've been working diligently on it, tracking down the families all over the country. I've been able to contact them. And, uh, I set a tentative date for June 1st, 2019, and that will be on the bridge up by La Corner. Uh, hopefully, all you can meet there. Uh, in my quest to organize this and checking with the Department of Transportation, they informed me that in order to dedicate a bridge, it requires, uh, legislations from the Massachusetts Legislature. Now I know why this, last time we did this, it took 43 years. But I guarantee you, it's not going to take 43 years this time. So, with that in mind, uh, I'm going to make a motion, and then we can discuss it if the board wants. I move that the town manager be authorized to write and sign a letter to State Rep. Representative Paul Mark, seeking his assistance in facilitating the necessary legislation to allow Dalton to memorialize and dedicate the Old Windsor Road Bridge, uh, parentheses, D., uh, D dot oh one slash, or dash, zero zero six, in honor of Specialist Mitchell K. Dowling, U.S. Army. I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I think it's a great idea, John. Thank you for your diligent work on that.
Yeah, I was just starting.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, give it to Brittany, so you...
Okay, so...
Probably important to get all the right details in the letter of Paul Mark. Oh! Paul Mark's already working on this. This is a formal, he's been on it since, uh, three or four weeks ago, or months ago.
Okay, thanks, John. Okay, appointments. We have two new police officers here. And I...
Mr. Jeremy?
Yes.
You wanted us to hang onto this and...
Yeah.
So, we need John Martel to sign it, and then we can deliver it to Mr. Rancourt?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice if everybody signed it before. Okay. This is, uh, for Kenneth Wallow to the select board. I hereby recommend for your ratification appointments of Nicholas Godet and Anthony Baroli as permanent intermediate officers. Both have graduated in June from the Massachusetts Police Academy and have completed their prescribed test of August 16th. Their effective date is August 20, 2018. Chief Cull's recommendation is included for your information, and thank you for your consideration of this appointment. I will entertain a motion to appoint these two young men to our force.
I'd make a motion to appoint Nicholas Godet and Anthony Baroli to the position of permanent intermen, permanent intermittent officers.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Chief Cull?
Sure. Uh, if I could take a moment. If you recall, uh, several, uh, almost six months ago, right, guys? Uh, six months ago, uh, we were looking for four part-timers. Two were immediately hired because they had the part-time academy, and these two gentlemen were given a conditional offer, uh, and the requirement was they pass all pre-employment tests. They stand before you today, graduated from the academy, just waiting for your appointment so they can start field training. Uh, and if you're so inclined to do so, I would like to have each one come up and just hand them a badge so we can take a photo opportunity for the first day.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so we got to vote on it first? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, if I can get Nicholas Godet, come on. I'm just going to take a photo opportunity here, so...
Sorry, Mr. Williams?
No. You got it?
Chief Cull?
There you go, sure can.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, Nicholas, um, not to age myself and believe me, I won't, Tiffany, I won't reveal the age, but Nicholas grew up on the same, uh, I'm sorry, Officer Marley and I grew up on the same block as Nicholas's mother. Uh, so the fact that I'm now, uh, you know, hiring him as a police officer, it pains myself, but, um, we're happy to have him. Uh, and the next candidate, come on up, Anthony, Anthony Baroli, is also from Dalton, and he, uh, served, very loyal servant of the Dalton Police Explorer Program, so it's nice to have another. If you don't know, we've had several police officers that come through that program, myself, Officer Strauss here today, Officer Bishop was through, uh, we've had, uh, Dispatch or Communication Director, Gabby Tagliari went through it, so there's, the list goes on and on. But, uh, today, we have Anthony Baroli, so if we can have this. We'll, we'll, there you go. We like to have proof that if anyone's been to a retirement, uh, program of ours, Deanna usually puts together a montage video of, uh, of photos, so we like to start from day one of a photo there, so thank you for your time. And I'm going to grab most of these people, we're going to tour the station so they know where their loved ones are going to be working and have a couple of words.
Chief, if they want to stay through the LED lighting?
They probably have some recommendations for you, all right. I know they're probably going to give them to me later on.
Congratulations, John, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
So, if the families want to follow me, I'll give you a tour so you know where they're going to be working.
I was going to say, so we're planning to... Sorry. Thanks, Mark, for sharing that.
Thank you, for sure.
Okay, next on the agenda is communication from Bertrand Regional Planning Commission, MPO caucus. Ken, would you lighten us on this one, please?
Well, there is a big letter here from the backup from Lee Cusack, Transportation Program Manager for the Bertrand Regional Planning Commission. And, so, the Planning Commission quarterbacks the Metropolitan, so-called Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO makes the decisions as to how the federal aid will be spent in our own community. That has resulted in the complete reconstructions of both South Street and Housatonic Street. And as you know, we'd like to get Dalton Division Road reconstructed as well. So it's quite important, I think, to have one of our own sit on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the way it's set up is that there are representatives from North, Central, and South County. And of course, we're in the center of county, and just so happens that, uh, the MPO is in need of a delegate, uh, and there can only be selectmen from one of the member towns. And, um, fortunately, we do have a volunteer, John Boyle, who has served on it in the past and is interested in serving on it again. But if you read the letter, you'll know that, uh, Mr. Cus wants somebody from the select board to come to the caucus. The caucus will be held here September 20th.
John, can you do that?
Yeah. They have been dragooned into this. I missed it, Mr. Cus, Ken suggested it too. And it's particularly important that you have someone in a key position on this board if you're looking for funding. And it just, it just doesn't happen by magic down there. There's 11 members, 10, excuse me, 10 members on the MPO, four are elected, uh, North County, Northeast County, South County, and Southeast County. Uh, the mayor of Pittsfield, or his rep, the mayor of North End, or his rep, the head of the BRTA, uh, can't help me out here, will either...
Mass Dot.
Mass Dot, we'll run the Mass Dot for the representative. Oh, also, the, uh, a vote by the commissioner.
Yeah.
Commissioner of Transportation of Massachusetts always sends his rep to the meeting. There's 10 votes, and you need to corral six of them to get your project even thought about. Boy, and the bigger monetary scope it is, the harder it is to, uh, get them to vote for it because there's limited resources. So, I think I'd be able to help the town out with my, uh, background in this area and, uh, move our projects forward.
Do we need to vote on this, or just appoint John?
Yeah. No. No. Is it a vote? Well, the vote will be September 20th.
No, but the representative from the select...
To hear from our representative.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, entertain a motion to make John a representative from the select board.
I make a motion that we have John Boyle represented at the Bertrand.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, thanks, John.
Well, you say, well, again, on the 20th, at 5:30 right here, there'll be a caucus, a literal election, using four or five people in attendance. But if someone in one of these other towns wants it real bad for some reason, you bring 10 or 15 people here and then that caucus will vote for themselves.
Really?
Yeah, that's how it works. Uh, so, uh, when that date rolls around, I might be looking for a few bodies to come down here and support my candidacy.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
Do the home court advance.
I'll let you know, it's September 20th, 5:30, right, Ken?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can you let us know? Okay. Now we've got some nice things going on here. First one is a grant from a Green program. Where the town of Dalton has applied for and received a grant of $238,726 and no cents from McComath, the Massachusetts Detective Office of Environmental Affairs, Department of Energy Resources. Uh, I understand the town manager and the town planner, Becky, who worked really diligently on this, but I also would like to thank all the members of the Green Committee, especially David Lithowski and Richard Hall for their sterling efforts in helping the current plan this tremendous grant. And Ken, would you like to elaborate on this, or Becky at all?
Well, I'm going to talk a little bit, and we'll get to the LED. The grant is really for the purpose of installing LED streetlights in town.
Okay.
And we have that as an agenda item, and we'll go into it in a little bit more detail. This is the formalization of what we talked about, I think it was almost a month ago.
Right.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant of $238,726 from the EOA.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have, where the town of Dalton has applied for and received a grant of, oops, that's the same one, there we got, $400,000, huh? Where the town of Dalton has applied for and received a grant of $10,000 from AARP, Massachusetts VRPC grant for a senior exercise trail. Okay.
So, tonight, we have Kelly here, the representative from the VRPC, to talk a little bit about the exercise trail. It was a planning session held at the Senior Center, and, uh, somebody asked Kelly, tell us what's going on.
It was actually applied for by the Bertrand Regional Planning Commission, and, um, it was awarded by the Massachusetts AARP, and it's for the purchase of outdoor exercise equipment to be installed along the back pathway of the Senior Center. So we'll have a little exercise trail. And I even brought some photographs of what we know we're getting. We know we're getting at least five pieces. Uh, there might actually be a couple more.
You have a motorized?
They're not motorized, no. You have to use...
How can I do it?
Well, you start slow and work your way up.
Hope you got it.
And I have Ted McDonough with me from Bertrand Regional Planning Commission.
I'm here to, um, confirm that the monies from AARP arrived, so we're ready to roll with the project, which has to be completed by November 30th of this year.
Wow.
Yeah, they're, um, many grants are for shovel-ready projects that jump-start your age-friendly efforts in town, and this grant came through AARP for the age-friendly Bertrand's larger...
Who does the install, do we install, or is that part of the $10,000?
Highway's going to be installed.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept $10,000 from Massachusetts AARP.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kelly, where is this going to be installed?
I'm sorry?
Behind?
Yeah.
Directly behind this?
Yeah, on the side and not in the back.
Along the sidewalk, I can...
Along the back, the emergency sidewalk that we've installed?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looks great.
Bye, Kelly.
Thank you. Okay, now, to the final report of LED streetlighting plan. Who wants to start on that, Ken, or...
Yeah, and, uh, Richard, if I can have something, I'll give you an overview. What we have, this just came this afternoon, is a kind of final streetlight design summary, and it shows you the amount of and type of different lights that we have, installations and removals. Remember when we had the presentation, we had the hookup in California in June, looked pretty carefully at it, and there was some question about removals? So, we tried to answer that here, and you can see that we're going to install 621 Cobra Head lights, we're going to remove 29 of them, going to install 15 decorative lights, uh, floods, rather, uh, and not remove any. Then we've got 77 decorative lights, and we have one removal. And you can see a list of light removals by map number. Uh, and what Becky has done then is put together the actual map so that you can see as clearly as we can with the information that we've received, what's going to be installed and removed. So, the first, if you look at the first map, what you have are the Cobra Head fixtures, and the different colors represent the different blotages, and you can see the key down below. Uh, the little x's primarily in the center of town shows you what's being removed. It's kind of clustered, so Becky broke that out in maps. You turn to the backside of that first map, you'll see the decorative fixtures and the ones being removed, and again, we only have a couple being removed. You can see those as x's. And then, we have individual maps, and, uh, I'll let Becky describe where they are as we go through the maps. I'll stop her if you've got any questions, Richard, if you have any comments at this point.
Yeah. Excepted the title.
So, um, when I go to the pens, I managed to put the street names next to the, uh...
Oh, great.
Numbers.
Okay.
Helps me a lot.
And then I wrote the street names on the map, too.
Yeah.
So you can match them up with what he did.
But the first two are actually switched. Uh, it should be Evelyn, Lindsey Drive, and then, on my sheet, we just look at the numbers.
I have a question on Oak Street. There's only three lights, and we want to shut all three of them off?
Yeah, I caught there two, the bear's looking.
Would it make sense just to shut the middle one off and keep the two on the ends off? I mean, Issa?
Yeah, map 1156 shows Oak Street with three lights being removed. Looked, and it looks, I don't know how many are there, but it looks like everyone.
It's like only three.
But I actually went out there tonight and it was three. You know, so my recommendation is turn the two off at either end and keep the one in the middle, or the other one.
If you do it the other way, then you have the one that's in the intersection. If you were to do every other, then you would turn the middle one off.
Okay.
Know what I mean?
Yeah.
I would just turn the middle one off.
That's what I mean.
I think that makes sense.
The middle one off, and then you've got the one at the intersection.
Can we do that, Ken?
Yes, we can.
I mean, we need to vote on it, or...
We'll notify, if that's a consensus, we'll notify them tomorrow to change it.
So 117?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah. So we'll keep 116 and 118 on.
So, the second one down is actually Lindsey Drive, and I believe the fire chief had a question about that one. And so I'm recommending that we keep it, because I don't know why it would be not kept. It's, it's, as you go around Greenridge into Lindsey, it's the first one in Lindsey, so it's sort of half covered in that corner anyway.
I think that's a good one to keep.
Yeah, that's kind of important. I think we better keep that one off, too. So everybody agree on that one?
Yep.
And then lastly, and I'll keep quiet, on the second page, there was two taken off on Skol Street, and, um, that's, and one was, had a question mark for removal, so I'm suggesting keeping one, but removing the other. I don't know how anyone feels about it.
Should we look at the map that's next to it?
Yeah, which is on map 15.
So maybe map 14?
Yeah, map 15, you can see the two lights shut off in the school there. Are those the only lights down?
Yes. There's one, there's one on the corner, and then there's two further in. One's by that driveway, and one's in between.
So, we're keeping 219 on, correct?
219 staying on.
Yeah.
And 217...
I would say just shut 2617 off and just keep 216 on.
Yeah.
So everybody agree with that? Does anybody see anything else that we should do before?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I feel remiss if I didn't mention there's an egregious misspelling of Housatonic Street.
Oh, yeah, and I, yes, I apologize. We got this about an hour ago, so I've added those streetlight, those names in, in about an hour, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
Oh, it's Indian Zoo, believe me.
Well, that's the Indian spelling.
Ah, yeah, that's just the West end, huh?
Is there any other lights that we should, anyone should think we should not turn off?
Just to clarify that point, actually, Richard, it says Housatonic Street. That includes each Housatonic Street.
Well, I just, I just put it because it's by the Housatonic River, I believe. If you look at map 41, it's 790.
Map 41. Page is that, map 15?
Yeah, 41 and 15.
46, yeah, it's all the back, John.
Oh, on the back of this page. All right. So actually, it's South Street.
It's South, yeah, South Street.
It's South Street, not Housatonic Street. I got you.
By Housatonic River.
Ah, okay.
Okay, yeah, it's down by Cranes.
Yeah, by you, Bob, right?
I'm up at the town.
Right by the old South Street there, everyone is.
That corner right there, Ken, but that, there's a sharp corner right there.
Right, one that's proposed to be taken out?
Yeah, it's right on the corner.
Yes, it is.
It's on the same, uh, one by?
It's on South Street.
Yeah, I say, map 41?
Yeah. It's right on that corner, when you go around that sharp bend.
That bend.
I'd be a little hesitant to shut that off, to be honest with you.
I agree with that.
Should I leave it on?
I'd say when in doubt, leave it on.
Yeah, me too. Because it's right on that corner.
Okay.
Everybody agree with that? Anything else? Any other comments, Richard, Becky? Thank you for your endless effort on this, this is good. Okay, a motion to approve as amended?
Make a motion to approve as amended the streetlight design summary.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So, if you would, Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a little further briefing after we stand with the project.
Sure.
Played out.
Yep, absolutely.
Agreed, understand where we're going with it. We've now received a draft purchase and sale agreement from Eversource, which has been passed to Town Council for review. We have a tentative schedule. We'd like to start installing by about the middle of November and be done by the end of January. So, in order to get the project done, we have to, of course, include the purchase and sale agreement. We have to develop a project budget, because the amount of money we have probably won't cover everything. So, we've got the GC grant now of 268,000, but there'll be some utility incentives. There's also incentives that come to us through Metropolitan Area Planning Council, because they have a special grant from, uh, from DOE R as well, it's called Rapid retrofit program. And so Becky's going to be working on this, because in terms of cost, we have to purchase the lights, we have to install them, we have to continue with the consulting with Tango, because we, this was an incremental contract, we only went as far as we could go with them, so we have a little bit more there, and then we have to figure out how they're going to be maintained. So, the end result is we may have some net amount that we need to appropriate. We're going to figure out what that number is. I may have to ask you to convene a special town meeting to do it, we just don't know what the number is now, whether it's small enough that the finance committee handles the reserve fund transfer, we just don't-
I have a question for you, Ken. With Eversource moving all these poles and stuff, and we're responsible once we buy these to move the lights and new poles, can we get something in agreement that all these poles they were planning to move, we don't have to pay to move them lights?
But, we're only got, the decorative lights, I think we're going to own those poles, kind of the slights and the subdivisions. But the, we're not going to own the wooden poles, we're going to own the fixture on the pole. Okay?
So will we get charged for moving from the previous pole to the new pole?
That's a good question, and I don't know, don't know the answer.
I'd like to make sure we don't get nailed with that.
We have, we have a, a, a purchase offer price, and I think that, uh, but we don't know about the installation piece. So we'll have to, we'll have to look at it, it's a good point.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Do you want a second?
Yes.
Thank you. A lot of work again. Appreciate it. Number 12, approval of OPEB Declaration of Trust. Ken, I'll turn this to you.
Well, you'll recall at the special town meeting on 25th of June, uh, town voted to, to re-accept the OPEC trust and to make our treasurer custodian of our OPEC funds as well as the trustee of that fund, with the idea that we were going to take all of the money that we now have, which is approximately 1.7 million dollars, and move it to the state retiree, retiree benefits trust. As part of preparing the documents to do that, town has to enact, agree to, this other post-employment benefits declaration of trust. And that's what you have before you today, and this was prepared by Town Council. And what it says essentially is that the treasurer is authorized to deal with this money and to do whatever we need to do to make sure that the money moves from where it is now, sitting in the savings certificates of deposit, to the, again, to the state retiree benefits trust.
I'll make a motion to approve the town as well on other post-employment benefits to OPEC Declaration of Trust.
Do you want a second?
I'll second, I'm sorry.
Great.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, John's not here, so does anybody have anything on Wacona Building School Committees or Central Berkshire School Committees?
Bob, I just, I don't know her name, but this young lady came specifically for this topic. Oh, no, I don't, she wants to say something, I don't think we're going to talk about it in depth, because our delegate, John Bartels, to the building committee, isn't with us as he needs to update us. But if you would like to say something, I'm certain the chairman would allow you to.
Absolutely.
I was just questioning when the demolition was going to start, and if we don't have a date for the school.
Oh, is this for the Old Dalton High?
Yes.
Oh, we're not to that one, yeah. This is just for the, uh, Wacona new building, okay? Okay, that's next, okay. Okay, we'll just wait for John to get back and put that, keep it on the agenda. Okay, town manager updates, now the Old Dalton High demolition.
Old Dalton High demolition. Uh, we had a walk-through, it's up to bid. We had a very successful walk-through last week. We had 13 general contractors view the building, and there was another, some of them didn't have protective gear, so they couldn't go inside, so the, so the engineers allowed them to go through again today. The bid opening, we moved back a week to give them time to prepare the bids on August 30th, we're going to open the bids.
August 30th?
August 30th, we're going to open the bids.
What time and place are you at?
2:00 here.
Is that something we can-
Yes, public open, yeah. We hope, you know, sometimes these things don't go smoothly as you think. You get bid protests, and we already had one contractor threaten a bid protest over advertising. So, um, if everything goes according to plan, we can award that, we'll award it right away once the engineers take a look at the bids. We'll have it under contract by the end of September, with the idea that the building will be demolished by the end of September.
Can I ask a question or a request?
Yep.
When we finally get a contractor, can they possibly, can the town send a letter to all the immediate residents notifying the timetable? And if there's, if there's any, like, any, there was some questions about airborne asbestos, is there any danger of that one during the deconstruction?
Yeah, they have to take all those protective measures, I can't tell you exactly.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be a problem with it.
No.
But some people are already questioning the fact, and I want to put their, put them to ease, but they also, if I live next to it, I would like to know a timetable about what's going on, also.
Yeah. We'll do it, we'll send a letter to the board.
That was exactly what I wanted to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, so thank you, because-
Do we have any other concerns?
Ken, once they start this job, how long do you anticipate it taking to completion? A week or 10 days, just a guess?
Oh, knock, well, almost three months.
Three months?
October, November, December, to, you know, mobilize, knock the building down, remove the debris, yeah. So the demolition schedule-
And rattle the ground and bring in film and all that?
And it won't be finally completed until the spring.
Right. Really?
Yeah, so it'll be landscaped.
Thanks.
Have we had anybody walk through and see what's salvageable, what they, what's really valuable that we can write off, or these contractors can write off the costs? I mean, I know there's those big, huge steel beams in there that are really still good.
Typically, you leave that to the contractor, they have to figure out what they might be able to salvage. The building is in such a condition that it'll be, it may all be treated as hazardous waste. And we just knock it down. We don't know yet, the means and the methods are left to the contractor, and that's part of their bidding process. They think they can salvage it, so they, they have an idea what that price might be, it can come off the bottom line, they can, you know, bid more competitively. That'd be nice.
Okay, any other questions on Old Dalton High?
Just like you say, Mr. Chairman, with that amount of interest, Ken, I would anticipate we get a somewhat favorable, uh, price.
Yeah, I hope so.
Keep it, plus the time of the year, too.
Right, basically, it's going to be into winter.
Yeah, most of those contractors are shutdowns.
Yeah, good end of the year price.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's why it was timed for this time of the year.
Great.
Okay.
There, there's nothing, I think, everybody knows what's going out in Northmont Park there, no new developments, we're just waiting, just waiting the grant from VRPC. They'll, they'll really handle it, there won't be any transport money, but they'll send their consultant out there once they, they're trying to, um, free up petroleum funding they have. So, uh, there's plenty of petroleum funding, it's just meeting the EPA's requirements for funding of Phase 1 study under petroleum grant, and that's what we're waiting to come through. As soon as we get that, the consulting firm is, is already lined up, they're already under contract with VRPC, and they're welcoming to decide they'll do a Phase 1 study for us.
I would find it very hard to believe that other than around the buildings, there's any possible demolition, contamination.
We didn't see much about this, you know, the study, we'll tell. Because it's, it's really historical study, they're not going to do anything more than look at it.
When will we know how to proceed if we can use that or not, if that land's good enough to use?
It really depends on the results of the Phase 1. Anything can be used, but to what degree will we have to clean it up, and will it be worthwhile, is the cost worth the benefit to us. So when we get to the end of the Phase 1 study, we'll know exactly what we have to do for Phase 2, if the Phase 2 is indeed required. And, um, the Phase 2 will define what pollutants are there and how they're to be removed.
Yeah, I'd be hard to trust, though, know how Pittsburgh put that softball complex in over the landfill.
Well, I could speak to that situation. I mean, I'm on the National Committee that's setting up standards about landfills and how to close them, and when they close them, they, they put a, a special type of clay that's impermeable, and then they, they also have soil and stuff on top. So what the people are playing on is, is very safe material that's, that, you have several feet, we don't want any contaminations. That's not the case in the field that we have, the-
I could, it's not the case in that softball field. I played down there many times, and there are stuff popping up through that field, so.
That's why, that's why I am currently on a committee, because we are trying to do a better job on enclosures. We recognize that, particularly the older ones, the older ones have less clay and some have none, as a, as a barrier. But if we're talking about what we need to do if we want to use a, a field that we have been contaminated on the surface, that is very difficult. That is very, the cost of covering the whole thing is very high. Plus, the plans call for moving some of that soil, uh, and the actual moving the top surface, uh, that, that could release some of the contaminants. And there clearly was confusion on July 11th by one of the members or more about the fact whether or not, uh, there was two streams that could be impacted, because there's only one stream that's slightly cut on it. If you start moving the soil, you can have the migration, and that's what the person who contacted the DEP was speaking about, was the migration to other areas outside of the field, and that, that can be a very big problem. Now, the other thing that the, uh, DEP normally considers is what do you intend to do with that? If you intend to have that, uh, soil on the surface being moved around, um, they're, they're going to probably require, uh, of Phase 2 and Phase 3, if you, if you're really, but if you're planning on-
That's only if they find contamination, correct?
Yeah, but Phase 2 is finding it, finding it. But normally in Phase 1, when you do it, you, you indicate to them what you intend to use the field for, and that makes it oftentimes make a decision about what they're going to do. If you're intending to sort of leave it alone and not disturb the surface at all, that there, you're much more likely to not be moving up to Phase 2 and Phase 3. Now, I also, I believe at one time, I mean, weeks ago, we were going to contact a lawyer about what he thought. I, I don't, I never heard anything back on, on that.
Yeah, um, well, as it turns out, I'm going to be talking to him tomorrow, I'll remind him. We didn't have a, we only had a very brief discussion.
Okay. But it, it could, you know, the size of that field and everything, if we had to do any kind of capping, uh, and, and that would be very, very expensive.
Oh, that's what they're going to do the study for, then we're going to take it from there, so let's, shouldn't we jump to any conclusions here?
Clearly it was industrial site, but we just don't know what's happening.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Sure.
You mentioned that one of the board members, I assume he's a board member?
I mean you, John.
No, you do not mean, because that's not true. I corrected about the number of streams. The anonymous letter to the DEP said there were two streams.
Okay, I actually have the anonymous letter.
Yep.
Uh, which was forwarded by the, to all of us, okay? And, uh, the proposed construction could result in the contamination of two nearby streams, uh, which are part of the Housatonic River watershed.
Right.
That doesn't say it's on the nine and a half acres.
Well, that's what we were talking about. Yeah, I, I corrected, I meant there was only one stream all up to the minor northwest corner. So, tell me, I'm confused. I know what I'm talking about.
Well-
Are you trying to, uh, drag something else into this?
Well, I, I, I believe you're wrong, because he can migrate a long distance.
Oh, okay.
And you were going to move the soil.
All right, we're not, this is-
Okay.
Well, we're not moving anything. The anonymous letter said there was two streams, but there was only one stream, and that's why I corrected, as one of the three and a half errors in that communicating.
I believe the subject right now is, the VRPC is-
You're right.
We got to find out.
Way off, we stay on that, we-
Way off topic. We need to stay back on the subject, okay?
Hello.
And there is only one stream on the-
Hey, I take it personal with the-
But he didn't say there's only one stream, he doesn't, he isn't making that accusation. We, we dismissed that, I think, incorrectly. I'll speak to that later.
Okay. All right.
I don't want you to speak to.
Well, happy now, if you, Mr. Chairman raised the issue of when we were going to finish with the old Windsor Road paving.
Yes.
I am happy to report that it is done, except for some very minor work along the sides, because if you've, if you've driven it, and I-
Drove up there today at 5:30.
Yeah, I drove, I drove it last Friday to make sure, because John roughly told me it was done, but I drove it in, and, uh, yeah.
Did we find out why it was such a delay and?
Yeah, John roughly asked, he asked the contractor, because it, it helps if people drive up and down it to pack that pavement before we put the final top foot on. That's one, that's why it was delayed.
Why don't they do that on the Mass Pike or something? I mean, they just pile it on there.
So it's a free rolling service for the people who are traveling.
I think we ought to get a discount.
Pack top down, yeah.
Okay, item 15, out.
I'm going to make a motion, every table has to weigh a full board.
Okay, I would recommend that.
So you do.
Okay, is there any further discussion? We'll put this on the next agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, items for future agendas. Ken, I would like to keep on, would it make sense to keep the streetlights on each agenda in case something comes up, so we can openly discuss it and not have to wait, that you might have to make a decision on, kind of like John's school committee, just nothing to report, we just move past it?
And what is your preference? Would you like me to pick it up under the updates, or have it as a separate agenda item?
Uh... Can we discuss it under your updates? Can we actually vote on it under your updates if you needed something?
An, an update is really meant to be what it says, an update, so-
Well, let's, let's keep it as an agenda item, please.
Yeah.
Anything else for future agendas?
Yes, um, short-term rentals in Dalton is a subject that has come up at the Planning Board, and there have been some complaints that I have received, or where people don't like the fact that Nextdoor has a short-term rental, you know, where people are staying, uh, and they're making more noise, because it sort of becomes like a party house or something. So, we, we have some regulations, and we, we're looking at whether we need to sort of strengthen or clarify it further. Uh, and also Airbnb, which, uh, seems to be, uh, regulated somewhat differently. Uh, we actually don't seem to have very good address on that at all. So I, I think we want to have a discussion of what we think, maybe of the needs and clarifications of what the regulations are for short-term rentals. It's a very big thing in many towns, uh, and it's a very controversial thing, because people have very strong feelings on-
people have very strong feelings on both sides. Some people actually use this now as a source that help pay for the, uh, costs of having a house and taxes, that need to have a room rented out. Uh, others are now thinking of doing it as an investment, have a second house for that purpose only. So, when we could fit that in, uh, that would be probably useful, and I could update you what the planning board is, is proposing to do.
Okay, anything else? Okay, remarks on the select work, anyone? John, I'd like to thank you for your, all that work on the bridge, that's kinda cool.
Just starting, Bob.
Yeah, but I mean, you've done a lot of legwork on that.
I've, uh, just give you a, a small update, I'm worried about what they were here before, but I managed to find the Dowling family proper, the mother and father, are now in the western slope of, uh, Colorado. That was a toughie, and, uh, even tougher was finding his widow, who now lives and teaches school in Drakehead, Mass. And I contacted them all, hey, they're all very enthusiastic, and I will add something that, I selected June 1st as the date for this, because May 30th at the high school is class night, and the Daling family comes to this class night every year, no matter where they are, Idaho, uh, Colorado, they come to Dalton for the ceremony, because there is a scholarship established for their son, Mitchell K., and they come, and they helping this election process, and they're just interested. So, in my conversations with them, because I certainly want them to be here if they can.
Absolutely.
So, set it up for June 1st, which is Saturday, 11 o'clock, on the bridge, or nearby, and, uh, they're all good with that, and, uh, they're already making plans to be here, and contact their greater family, which are all over the country, so.
Okay, great.
And, uh, they're, they're very enthusiastic and receptive, and they wanna thank the board and the town for its interest in, uh, promoting this honor.
Okay, anyone else have a remark? Okay, this leads to announcements. Town's clerk office would like to notify its residents that absentee ballots are here. If you expect to be away for the upcoming state primary on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, please get your application in for an absentee ballot. Applications may be found on the Massachusetts Attorney General's website at www.mass.gov/ago. They can also be obtained in the town clerk's office. For more information, please contact the town clerk's office at 684-6111, extension 14, or 15, or stop in at the town clerk's office at 462 Main Street, Monday through Wednesday, 8 to 5, or Thursday, 8 a.m. to 6 p.m. The Fitch Housa House is now open from August through October, on Saturdays from 12 to 4. John Bartels holds office hours every Thursday afternoon from 4:30 to 6:00, or by appointment in a select board office at the town hall. For further information, please call 684-6111, extension 11, and his home number is 684-2526. The veterans agents' office hours are Wednesdays from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the town hall, and 11:40 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the senior center. Services for Dalton veterans are now available Monday through Friday through the North Adams Veteran Service Department. Please call 413-662-3040. Public Power is the town supplier for the municipal electric aggregation program. You'll see that the name of the supplier of electricity on your Eversource bill, unless you have another supplier, or to opt in or out, go online to colonialpowergroup.com/dalton, or call Public Power at 1-800-830-2944. Conservation Commission is looking for new members, yeah, come on. If interested, please contact the town manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. Dalton Beautification Committee is seeking volunteers to assist in maintaining the commission's established garden spaces in the community. If interested, please contact the town manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. Please note that Dalton's official meeting postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. State Representative Paul Marks holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the town hall, and from 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach Mark at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The building inspection office hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., and on Tuesdays, from 8 to 12:30 p.m. I move, I declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body.
I'm moving to executive session, not return to open session.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, vote. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Scruggs?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
I am adjourned for five minutes, thank you.